We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Casey Barney here, Kathleen DeWolfe here, Eli Badger.
Here.
Fran Newton here. Okay, um, well, that's, we have some minutes. The first were from May 31st. Are there any corrections or additions?
No. I didn't.
All right. I don't have any, they're hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Friday, May 31st as written.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Monday, June 3rd.
Okay, I found on page two, line seven.
Okay.
Vice Chairman DeWolfe presented to the selectmen.
Okay.
A draft for a posting for public meetings.
Okay.
Page two, line seven, say that again?
Yep.
Presented the...
To the selectmen, a draft policy.
Got it.
And down on line 29, oh, no, I'm sorry. It starts on 29, it goes to 30. The board of selectmen started the process to amend the lease as... I crossed it out so much, I don't even know what it says now.
[laughing]
In part, delete as, the Ashland Historical Commission, insert as the overseer of the property no longer existed.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right, on page three, line 32. It says, "Selectmen agreed to request for this additional funding." I would get rid of the word "for," agreed to request this additional funding. Anything else?
Boy, I remember, we didn't have these line notations.
I know.
This is very nice.
Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, June 3rd as amended.
Sure.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, we have new, new business. Charlie, do you want to start this one off? This is the...
Ashland Planning Board Chairman, Martine Badger.
Yes.
Was awarded the New Hampshire Planners Association Citizen Planner of the Year.
Congratulations, Martine. I understand you have something you'd like to say.
I do have something I'd like to say.
Okay.
They present this award to recognize those who volunteer for planning and zoning boards. But I'm just a relative newcomer to the field of planning, planning and land use. I became a member of the planning board only four years ago. I became chairman of the planning board only one year ago. However, I would like to mention two people who I feel had greater reason to be honored as citizen planners. My earliest introduction to the land use field was through the years that my husband Eli Badger served as a member and/or chair of the zoning board and the planning board. There were a lot of discussions at home as he explained terms and concepts in response to my questions, and as he and the land use boards developed recent decisions based on Ashland's ordinances and the state laws. So I absorbed a lot peripherally. Then at various times, I was recruited to take minutes for both the zoning board and the planning board, and that gave me a little closer view of how they actually operate. But when I finally became a member of the planning board, the person I appreciated at that time was Susan Cloud, who was our chairperson. She has over nine years, over nine years' worth of knowledge and experience in leading our planning board and interpreting the town's ordinances and the state laws. Her knowledge of land use issues and recall of previous cases, cases is commendable and valuable. So this award that I received is really an award to honor the knowledge, expertise, and guidance of my two land use mentors, both of whom have also served on various other boards and committees in the town. It will take me a long time to develop the broad knowledge base that both my husband and Susan have in the land use field. Honoring any one individual as a citizen planner is just scratching the surface of all those who volunteer time into developing the town zoning ordinances, the town's master plan, reaching decisions, and updating ordinances as laws and issues change. Being on a land use board is not a liked responsibility. Decisions must be based on ordinances and laws, but you realize early on that those decisions are not always the popular or friendly decisions that some people might expect or want. Instead, those decisions must be reasoned, justified, and consistent. I would like to encourage others, especially the younger generations, to become a part of the land use process and decision-making. We encourage anyone to come to our meetings to watch and become familiar with the roles of the land use boards. So I would like to share and extend this honor as citizen planner to all those who are currently on the planning and zoning boards and to all those who have served on those boards in the past.
Thank you, Martine. I really appreciate that. Having personally worked with Susan, I think that my first exposure to town government was sitting in on planning board meetings, and that was the beginnings of the whole Berry-Gaw development when it was, had a completely different, um, uh, plan. And watching you tear apart and ask questions and dig into the many aspects of that development, I thought that my head was going to explode. But it was one of the first boards that I volunteered to be on, and I was an alternate and fortunately got to be on the board, working with Susan, and I truly appreciate all the work you've done. This award should have been given out a long time ago, and I think this is a good lesson. We ought to, we always talk about recognizing our volunteers, but I don't think we, we truly recognize them and give them the public accord, accolades that they so obviously deserve. So I thank Susan, I have also worked with Eli, and certainly appreciate all of the work he's put into the town. Again, my first introduction to the Badgers was, again, part of my first introduction to town government. And I could say I rue those days, but it's been, it's been a great journey. So thank you, Susan, thank you, Martine, thank you, Eli, and all the volunteers who put in their time to this town.
Oh, I'd also like to thank Susan. I'm, I'm on the planning board now as the ex officio, but as a member of the Conservation Commission, Susan and I shared many conserva, uh, issues that planning and conservation, um, they overlap. Conservation Commission appears to be a land use board, but officially it is not. But the Heritage Commission is a land use board, and Susan chaired that board for two years, three years, and we, we managed to get quite a bit of work done in the short time, along with Katie Ma, who was the first chairman. So I've had the pleasure of working with Susan, and we've struggled over many issues, trying to find the common ground, to try to satisfy the applicant and to enforce the ordinances that the voters have chosen in this town. I've interacted with Mr. Badger on occasion also, so, um, actually, I prefer, I, I do enjoy land use. I find it very interesting and very satisfying. So thank you, Susan, thank you, Martine, and thank you, Eli.
Great. Okay.
Can I get a copy of your statement? We can add, we can add it to the minutes for the record.
Oh, okay. Okay. We have some 4th of July updates, but I see that...
The update left.
Kendall has just left, so we will move on to old business unless there's any other new business. When, when Kendall gets back, we'll go to that topic.
Okay. My project list, or our project list.
Before we get started, it has been suggested to me, and I think it's a good one, that we ought to put dates associated with these things, when they're updated, so that, you know, we have a... Where we start with them? Yeah, exactly. When they're initiated and what, you know, when the current, um, update is, so if we could start adding dates to those, I think it would be...
Where do you want the dates? I mean, the reason why I got rid of the dates before was everything because it was just way too long.
You can just put a date under current, if there's something, if there's a new update, say as of whatever date.
I've forgotten how long ago the TAB grant was initiated.
I know, I know.
Myself, and, yeah, it kind of, it's an eye-opener how long some of these projects take.
And going forward, if we just, when we start a new project, put a start date on it, and then date the updates. Okay?
The only thing for my up, my current dates, like, these are not really, they're ongoing.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But when it's appropriate, if you could add a date.
I'm going to say, when was the project started?
Started.
As of what date, has there been any movement on that? And hopefully, we can have a date of closure.
Yes.
On some of these. I said hopefully, Charlie.
This, this project was initiated, what, four years ago?
Something like that, yeah.
And this is how...
How long it takes.
How long it takes, and it's a lesson to us, and the excitement, and when we received the award, that we thought, huh, it's going to start next year, and here we are four years later, and...
Everything takes time.
Yeah.
Yeah, all these projects are before me.
Yeah.
These...
The TAB grant was slightly before Charlie.
Yeah, it was.
All of these are.
So now that we've talked about that issue, before we go on, Mr. Hughes's returns, and so maybe we can back up and get the 4th of July updates.
And absorb what we just said to you.
Kendall?
You're good. I'm just here for backup.
Okay. At the recent 4th of July meeting, it was brought up about vendors, okay? And specifically, the group of vendors that Mr. Larry Chesley represents.
Yep.
And I understand that they may, may have come in to get some vendor permits. We have some concerns about that.
Okay.
There is a particular reason we did not invite him back this year.
Okay.
And we'd like to discuss that with the board, let you know, so you can make an informed decision on whether or not to have him back.
So Chesley has come in to get, people that he represents have come in for permits? Okay.
I, I, yeah.
Okay.
There, the reasons that we did not invite him back to start off with, he was very rude and started swearing at, at some of our volunteers, specifically Sue and John Harbaugh, myself. Should this be a non-public, since we're talking about reputations?
I think you can just surprise with saying that there were issues that you were not comfortable with.
Leave names out of it.
Yeah, leave names out of it.
Okay.
Okay.
There was a, we, we provided a trash bin, a dumpster, to put the trash in. That was not done. The trash was screwed all over the areas, we picked it up and piled it.
It would have been great if you had forwarded that stuff, so we were prepared at the meeting.
You pass those around, those pictures there.
Thank you.
And then you'll also see beer cans. So between the trash and the, um, the language and that, there, we, the DPW provided oil cans, vegetable oil cans for them to put oil in, you'll see in one of the pictures where the oil's on the ground instead of in the cans.
Okay.
The overall mess that was provided, this is why we did not invite him back.
Okay.
Okay? In moving forward, we would urge the board, and obviously not this year, but next year, to think about changing their vendor permit fees for special events, such as ours, just like Meredith and Laconia and them do for Bike Week.
Yep.
To the minimum of, of what we charge our vendors to go in there.
Okay.
We would also encourage you not to issue vendor permits in that area of town due to the lack of space. I have spoken to Tony a little bit about this as well.
Okay.
There is a public concern about where the vendors park in the, the road itself.
Yep.
And we made a conscious effort not to have a Mexican place, a Chinese place, or a pizza place, because we don't want to compete with Ashland businesses.
Okay.
So, and I do understand you have a Mexican place.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we consciously did not want to compete against standing Ashland businesses. I will leave this for you.
Okay.
If you have any questions for me?
Kendall, I have concerns about this whole vendor issue. You never came in front of the board to discuss this with us at all by RSA. It's the select board and the chief of police that sign off on vendor permits. You want, you want the RSA?
No, no, I, I...
Okay. So where are these contracts, how were they drafted?
They were all given to, all given to him, he signed off, and we spoke to him about that.
But, as we discovered, when we were doing the taco, that is, isn't our purview to sign off on vendors? That is revenue due to the town.
Well, we came here last year about that, we were told to follow this procedure. That's the same procedure that we're following.
I don't know what procedure you're referring to.
Forward all of the contracts and everything to Tony, to Charlie, and, and he would...
I'm just, I'm just informing you because of this non-communication, that by, by statute, this is revenue that is due to the town, and I don't know how you had the authority to assume that, that this revenue would go for your fundraising.
It has for many, many years. We haven't changed any of it.
Do you have that information, Fran?
Well, it's been my understanding that the 4th of July committee has, you know, used that as...
They, they used a single vendor, they didn't bring in multiple vendors and charged them individually vendors fees.
Yeah. I think it's something we're going to have to explore.
Yes, I think it does, I'm just informing you that, um, that you were only allowed certain authority, and this might go as well intentioned, as exciting as it is, this is still something that is controlled by statute, and we do have an ordinance for it, and we needed to have it presented to us. Back in your, your stages when you were planning this, we could have explained it to you, we could have collaborated with you and worked out some sort of plan on how these were going to be handled. How much are you getting from each vendor?
300.
That's not, you know, that's more than what the town, I believe, charges for vendors.
It is.
Yeah.
It's what, it's what, we took the amount that we get from Chesley's and divided it.
But you didn't have the authority to put that into place. Who gave you the authority?
We sent everything to Charlie.
Well, Charlie, I've informed Charlie that this RSA is going forward, so this is why...
This is something, we need to make sure that we're complying in the future.
After this event is complete, and before the next event is planned.
Yeah, we'll have an after-action meeting.
Why don't we all get together? We have one plan for the 4th Wednesday of August.
Okay, okay.
But why don't we all get together?
I think that's a good idea.
And sit down, and once you start reading RSAs. Yep. And are trying to conform to what they say, business as usual doesn't always exist.
And we have, yeah, we have statutory duties to fulfill.
But I think that if we sit down and talk...
Yeah, I agree.
More than willing to do that, I am trying. That's just, I'm just bringing that up.
It was a lot different this year, and, and I think an after-action meeting and make sure that when we go forward, we have, we're doing everything by the letter of the law.
Because, you know, the talk on this day, yeah, and, and that's the best I could do, say, yes, according to statute, in that we'll have to have a discussion with them.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yes.
So I guess I'd like to weigh in on this little conversation. All of a sudden, this year, it's an issue for vendors. We need vendor permits for the people down at the ballpark. In the 10 years I've been doing this, I never signed a vendor permit for anybody involved with the 4th of July. The vendor permit only came for those people outside of the ballpark area that were going to do vendor stuff. We had an issue a couple of years in a row with one vendor who put his vending machine right out next to the highway and became a traffic issue.
Right, right, I remember that.
So now I'm trying to figure out, of all these years of the vendors being down at the ballpark, and I don't care if it's just one vendor with all of his buddies down there, or if it's multiple vendors, all of a sudden now, that's not what the, the law says, something different?
It's not all of a sudden, Tony.
Well, well, I think, I think there's some history here. I, I think there's some history here, okay? And it's never, and I understand, well, we're not doing business that way anymore, but maybe somebody ought to check to find out what the legality of it is that when you're putting on the 4th of July committee and the selectmen signing off on vendor permits.
Well, that's exactly why we want to have this meeting.
So we've got to make sure that we're interpreting RSAs correctly.
Absolutely, Tony.
Right? Because we run into that a lot at the police department.
And that's exactly why we want to have this meeting, to make sure that we all understand and, you know, are on the same page.
I guess I'm a little upset, at the 11th hour now, it's becoming...
It's, it's not an issue right now. We're going to, the event will go on. We're just bringing it up for future reference, to make it, to make sure that we're all compliant.
As I said, this was brought to me by a constituent. I can't blow them off, that's not my business.
I know, I didn't say you, it's your call, Mom.
No, no, I, I found the RSA, and yes, it states who has oversight of this. Now, if we had known that they were planning the vendors in a different setup this year, it's not Chesley coming in with his group.
But that shouldn't matter, whether it's a group or...
Excuse me, I'm speaking, Tony, please.
Okay, that's what I want to say.
That if we had given, if they had come with, to us, the first I knew about it was last month's minutes. So we need to have a dialogue well in advance of July 4th, and we have not had that dialogue. It's been given to Charlie, Charlie's in the learning curve too. But I still have a duty, when somebody comes up to me and asks me a question, to find the answer. I found the answer, and I presented it tonight. You don't have to like it, you don't have to agree with it, but we must comply.
Absolutely.
That's what I was elected to do, so please allow me to state what I was asked to do by a constituent.
Okay, so we have constituents.
A voter, a towns person.
Okay.
A person who was interested, asked me a question, and it's my duty to find the answer for it.
Okay, so you, you, there is an RSA that is out there that says...
Yes, sir, it is.
So is when any vending goes on in town, then the selectmen have control, along with the chief of police, over whether the permit gets issued?
No, only, only our, the permit that we acted on for the tacos at Quincy Quail that you signed off for, but the general RSA is 320:1. It defines what a Hawker vendor, et cetera. And it's under the power, and also under the powers and duties of the town, 31:102-A, with the select board has oversight of these activities.
So this is all new to us, Tony, too, and we just need to sort it out, okay? That's all, that's all that we're trying to do.
Yeah, we don't need to be defensive, it's, a question was asked, I found the answer.
Susan?
Well, if we could back up to the statement that it's never been done before, that's not correct either, because the previous 4th of July committee did run vendor contracts and requested the permit to be issued by the selectmen since the time of Paul Bransker, and especially under the Heritage Commission, I saw all the paperwork.
Yep.
So whatever previous selectmen, and then at the time, a town administrator works, works for the selectmen.
Right.
Now his town manager, he's in a different position. But as administrator, it should have still run by the board of selectmen for every one of these permits that came in.
Again, we will, we will sort this all out.
And that had been the procedure, so to say that it's never been done before.
Well, I'll, I'll make this statement, I believe I never signed off on vendor permits for the 4th of July down at the ball field. In the, in the 10 years I've been here doing the chief of police thing, so I'm just now, so that's what catches me off guard. If, if they were done and everything was run through where they were supposed to, it never came across through my desk in 10 years.
We have found a lot of things haven't been followed, the proper protocol, and it gets us into trouble. It puts us in positions that we can't, we have questions that we have to answer, and we don't have answers for. And just because that's the way it's always been done, doesn't make it right.
No, I get that, we deal with that a lot at the PD.
And I want to stress, we need to have this information, the board, well in advance of the event, so we can, we need to find out what steps we need to take. I can't say that's happened, that we have not, we have not had the information flow on a, on a monthly basis or however often they meet, and it, it, it causes miscommunication. So that's all I have to say, that I phoned the RSA to answer the question that was posed to me. I presented it to Kendall, so he can take it back to his committee and say, you know, we have some RSAs that we need to find out about to make sure that we are complying with the law.
Kendall, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Five minutes have been forwarded to you guys every single month.
I've only received last month's.
Every month they're forwarded.
And did you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I, nobody from this board presently comes to the meetings, but we have had selectmen there in the past, and nothing was brought up before. But I'm not really sure that's exactly what we were here for anyway. The question is, right now, the 4th of July, the ballpark, the vendors are there.
Yep.
And there are people who want to line up on the main street and take business away from ours.
Right.
What we are asking is if for that day, you do not issue any.
Yep, I think that's reasonable.
That is our concern, that's what we're asking for, that's what we came here for.
So how many have come to the town office? Just one?
Got one right here.
And where do they want to set up?
They want to sell tacos on July 3rd from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, and where do they want, where?
The 44 Main Street. This is the one that we saw, we approved, actually, similar a couple of months ago.
Oh, you mean at the Quincy Quail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's on private property, we can't...
But it's not on private property.
If it's on the sidewalk, no.
There is no, they would have to take up a parking space.
Yeah. I would say we should not sign off on it, given the conflict of, of interest in terms of the festival that's been well planned.
And I know they've been at Busky's before, and the woman, what's the name that lives next door to Dollar General?
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, but I would agree that we should not be issuing vendor permits to competitors for the, yeah, absolutely. You know, it blocks traffic and, and everything else, so I think we should...
Actuance generally is based upon safety.
Yeah, well, for sure, and I think we ought to restrict the event to the...
Exactly.
Those that the committee has already planned, that's my opinion. Thoughts?
So the consensus is no on this one?
Well, I think, Casey, should we make a motion to make sure that it's...
Do you have a comment?
No.
No? Okay.
This, this is crazy.
No, everybody wants a little piece of the pie, I can understand that, but at the same time...
Not the fact that there's a vendor, just the whole, this whole thing was handled very poorly.
All right, so do...
Not by any person in particular, I think this meeting, it was handled poorly.
Do you want a motion to deny the permit?
Yeah, the applicant is there.
And the others that make them, eh?
Yeah, yeah, good idea. Is there a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
For at least July 3rd.
Yes, for July 3rd. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, well, Casey, why don't you be the select board representative to the meetings?
Sorry?
Why don't you be the select board representative to the...
Okay, moving on, is there any other new business?
No, we're on project list.
Hmm? We're on the project list, that's right. That will, want to make sure we completed new business before we moved on. Charlie, you want to go back to the project list now?
Yeah. Make sure I got that motion down.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Was it just the one permit or all permits?
All incoming permits as well.
Yeah. Yeah, for the third, for the third, yeah. Deny permits for the third was the motion.
Yep.
Okay, the TAB grant, this is, uh, it's actually moving along pretty quick now.
You couldn't fool me, I haven't seen anything yet. I keep waiting for the sidewalks to be done.
Since 2015 is when it started. Well, on my end, it kind of is, from an administrative perspective. We're really trying to wrap up the assessing, it's going to move to the easements that CNP is working with NHDOT to get that, that wrapped up. Final design has been submitted to NHDOT.
Okay.
So expectations are, maybe we go out the bid in the fall for construction in the spring.
Oh, I thought it was going to start this summer, I guess not. Okay, next spring.
Apparently you were wrong.
Well, I remember the discussion about not wanting to interfere with the 4th of July celebrations.
You're absolutely right, yes, yes, it did come up.
It's not going to interfere.
Obviously, it's not now, but I thought there was going to be some digging, didn't you?
I thought there was digging in August.
Yeah, okay, anyway.
No, you remember, you mentioned that, and we said we'd make sure that, all right, so when it happens?
The spring, got it.
Okay, so Clean Water...
Maybe next year.
I submitted the application for the Clean Water State Revolver Fund to NHDES. The other one, sorry for the confusion on the email.
I understand.
They had two applications for the trust fund. One is for construction, one was non-construction, the one that I was given was for non-construction.
The one that I was given was for non-construction.
Okay.
I had concerns because that application is due next week.
Oh.
Uh, the construction one, which I think our project qualifies for, is not due till September.
Okay.
And, uh, which reminds me, part of, if we're funded, or we make it on the priority list, for this one State Revolver Fund, we can take that and put it on, um, the new application.
Yes.
Which basically, they're looking for if we have quote-unquote "skin in the game", where we can, how, we have the resources to, uh, put in for the application.
Sure has resources.
Okay.
Ashland Properties, Par, uh, this is the feasibility grant.
Yeah.
Uh, I do have a quick update. Uh, CDFA was really wondering where we are with the contract. Warren, Warren Street Architects is working on getting the contract.
Okay, all right.
The, uh.
Another thing that's gonna probably take a long time to come to some sort of plan.
Yep, yep, that, yeah, I don't have a timeframe on the feasibility grant. Uh, the L chip, this one is gonna take another long time. 'Cause I asked, I met with the architect last week, and he told me, uh, this is probably a twenty-year plan, uh, that, meaning that the design is probably good for at least twenty years. Uh, it got redesigned when we thought about moving the PD down here, uh, and having utilities up there. Look, overall, it's just in the design phase.
Yeah.
You know, uh, if the town were ever to vote this through, uh, to rehabilitate the town office, I assume it would change again.
Yeah, okay.
Just remember that we needed this base plan in order to apply.
For any grants.
For any grants.
Yep.
And Susan, that's correct, correct. I said it that correctly.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
It's almost there.
Yeah, almost.
Yeah. Uh, the GIS mapping project, uh, that one is, it's, it's completed, the preliminary phase is done, but it's sort of, they put that on hold till later on in the year, uh, 'cause of the funding aspect of it. Um, that, the way it's being funded is per capital reserves. We don't fund the capital reserves until December.
Yeah.
So when we've, that, that will get going, once we, you know, refund our capital reserves so we can pay them.
Okay.
And they're aware of that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, one more year, and then we got one more year with this one.
All right.
These are never going away, are they?
No.
Well, we'll be updated.
Yeah. Uh, the Whipple House lease agreement, um, that was sent to legal counsel for review. I forwarded that to, uh, the response to you guys. Um, and that's it.
Okay. All right. Um, any other old business? Select Board items, so what?
I do have a couple of updates about the electric department.
Ah, yes, I was gonna ask you that.
Yep, uh, we hired a new linesman, um, someone fresh out of school. Uh, so now that we have, we have two people, uh, so we can start getting some projects done, and, um, you know, with the safety concerns, we had just one person working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now we have two. Um, I had brought in a consultant that I met last week, someone with, uh, was about ready to retire from the industry, uh, to maybe help us get a strategic plan. Uh, the goal there is maybe a five-year plan for the department, how we can, uh, well, did everyone look at the audit?
I did not. I got it, but I haven't looked at it yet.
Um, the department lost a hundred and six thousand last year. Um, if, what I've been, way I've explained it to everyone, if you take out a hundred and three thousand dollars in depreciation, they lost three thousand. Uh, might sound good, but depre, at the expense of depreciation, you are losing, putting into your infrastructure, uh, basically, things are getting old. Uh, financially speaking, the department continues to basically live week to week.
Yeah.
Um, we are watching the expenses over there, um, and trying to make basically ends meet to turn this around. Uh, we had some feedback from VEPSA, that's Vermont Power, who's the broker that helps small municipalities, uh, in their electric departments, take a look at our rate structure. Um, I don't know where that's going to go. Our consultant said, um, we might be okay with the rates, but we, we just basically have to do some more analysis to see where we're at.
Will, will his analysis take a look at capital improvement plans? I mean, I'm concerned that there's nothing put away, away for the future, and the polls are old, everything is old.
Yep.
And that leaves us in a very precarious situation.
You know, Fran, I, I, that worries me.
Yeah.
If there's, something major happens right now.
Yeah.
I don't know how we're gonna pay for it.
I don't know either.
We already had the issue down on Winona Road that.
With the telephone pole.
The telephone pole, that we had to bring in an outside, um, I guess you don't call them a vendor, what, what we, outside group to replace it for us.
Yeah.
And pay for detail, and it was quite expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, that's very concerning, so hopefully you can talk to the consultant, that we need to plan for the future. So how about water and sewer? Can you give us a construction update?
Uh, they poured the foundation.
Okay.
Um, that's moving along. Um, other than that, just that they poured the foundation is pretty much where they're at with it.
Okay.
There's no equipment delivered or anything.
Did you get the email with the pictures?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I appreciated that, 'cause it was further along than I thought it was. And I was to suggest that maybe we take a, a walk down there, but now we don't have to, because they provided the information.
Right, no, that was very nice.